Well, welcome. It's very nice to see everybody here in the chambers with us this evening. And as always, it's great to be spending some time with my colleagues here again. So I look forward to all that. It's always great to see you. First order of business is to call this business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, April 1st, 2024. And we have Clerk Moss here to call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you so much, Clerk Moss. May we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hoffman from the meeting this evening?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. For our opening ceremony tonight, we are honored to have Rabbi Shichter here from Temple Benai Israel. And just to remind people about how this will work is that I will ask the rabbi to come forward. I will ask everyone to stand while she provides her remarks. And then I'll ask folks to remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Rabbi.
Good evening. Every April around the time we celebrate Earth Day, Inner Faith Power and Light organizes Faith Climate Action Week. This year, it runs from April 19th to 28th, and the theme is Common Ground: Cultivating Connections Between Our Faith, Our Food, and Our Climate. While we hope to examine our responsibility to use agricultural practices that safeguard our sacred earth and how our faiths call us to respond with just solutions for all. Living here in Kalamazoo, here in Michigan, it seems all the more important to draw attention to our responsibility for our earth. We see all too often the dismissal of the role humanity plays in caring for this planet. We see chemicals and trash in our waterways and our green spaces, dismissal of the need for diverse ecosystems in favor of commercial endeavors. As leaders of our city, we look to you for leadership. The sacred text of Leviticus, which the Jewish community is currently reading, states in chapter nine, verse five, "They brought to the front of the tent of meeting, the Mishkan, the tabernacle, the things that Moses had commanded, and the community leadership came forward and stood before God." The commentators teach us that kol ha'edah means the community leadership, the people who are responsible for the rest of the community. While God speaks often to Moses and also addresses the entire people, or asks Moses to address the people on God's behalf, here it is clear that the leadership had been brought before God so that they may learn the rules, the laws, and pass them along to the rest of the community. This is similar here in our own city, our own structure of laws and rules. The leadership is responsible for knowing said laws and enacting them. The people are to learn the laws in order to hold our leadership accountable. Together, we can and will make our city a place for all people to learn, to grow, and to thrive. May each of you, our leaders, recognize the importance of your role and lead us with compassion, thoughtfulness, and vision. And may you be blessed in your going and your coming. Amen. The United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Rabbi. I appreciate your presence here this evening. We have a proclamation this evening, and I believe that Director Baker, is that correct, is going to come forward to accept this proclamation. I will take it down. Very important proclamation here as we, well, actually, we've had the construction season going for a while here already, haven't we? Usually, it's the kickoff for that, but I guess we're well into it. So I will go down, and Commissioner Decker is going to read it.
Thank you, Mayor. National Work Zone Awareness Week, April 15th through the 19th, 2024. Whereas, the city of Kalamazoo recognizes that road construction and maintenance is vital for a safe, well-maintained transportation system for all Kalamazoo area families and businesses. And whereas, we must protect construction, maintenance, and utility workers who courageously put their lives on the line to improve the safety and the quality of life of those traveling area roads. And whereas, the 2024 National Work Zone Awareness Week theme is Work Zones Are Temporary, Actions Behind the Wheel Can Last Forever. And whereas, most often, drivers or their passengers are killed or injured in work zone crashes. And whereas, most work zone crashes are caused by inattentive or distracted drivers, and speeding is the leading cause of fatal work zone crashes. And whereas, Work Zone Awareness Week is an opportunity to raise awareness for worker and road user safety by planning ahead, reducing speeds, minimizing distractions, and expecting the unexpected when approaching and passing work zones. And whereas, the city of Kalamazoo is dedicated to investing in safe and reliable road infrastructure to the Kalamazoo community, and call on our federal and state partners to bring much-needed funding and innovation to protect and restore our critical road infrastructure. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby recognize work zone safety essential to the life of our construction workers, and acknowledge the importance of educating the public about safe driving in construction zones during the National Work Zone Awareness Week campaign, April 15th through the 19th, 2024, and encourage all residents to pay attention, slow down, and go orange Wednesday, April 17th, for Work Zone Awareness Day.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, City Commissioners. On behalf of the Department of Public Services, we're honored to have this proclamation in place. Work zone safety is something we think about all throughout the year as we're working to maintain infrastructure, our roadways, do road repairs, pahle repairs. Our Department of Public Services responds to over 100 water main breaks per year that can be quite involved at times. And as we're all well aware, the city was very proactive this year in construction with most of our major projects kicking off already on March 4th, about four weeks ago. So we've got several, some of which very complex detours in place. Slow down. Be careful out there, folks. We really encourage you to do that. We want everybody to come home safely, including our workforce and all the great citizens of Kalamazoo. All of our detours are posted on our website, and signage is up for everything. So with that, we thank you, and we look forward to everybody being safe out there in and around our work zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. Appreciate it. Next is the adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on G, the consent agenda, that you would like to have moved to H, the regular agenda? See none. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? All right, see no one. The agenda stands as is. Next, Communications, COO Lamb.
I would like to move number five to the regular agenda, please.
Okay, request to move G, five, to the regular agenda. Communications, COO Lamb.
Thank you. To start off, I would like to congratulate our own Vice Mayor Hess for being acknowledged as a YWCA Woman of Achievement honoree. Certainly, this is very, very well-deserved, and I want to personally thank you for all that you've done to lift me up on days that might not always go so well. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your support of our community. We're proud to serve with you. And as we acknowledge Works on Awareness Week or Month, I do want to talk a little bit about our construction season. As we've alluded to, we do have a lot of significant projects that are currently happening with the city. We understand it's very frustrating. We understand it takes a lot of patience. We want to thank the community for being patient and just understand how critical these improvements really are to this community. Also, I want to acknowledge our city crews and our contractors who are out there working hard to keep these projects moving on schedule. As I understand from Director Baker, so far, so good. Also, really want to acknowledge public services leadership and our communications team for really trying to do all that they can to get the word out, whether it's the newsletter, whether it's ads on the radio, whether it's websites, social media posts, really trying to make sure people are aware. Want to make sure that you all know on the city's website, there's a construction updates page where you can sign up to get updates. There's also a very helpful section that acknowledges all of the businesses that are being impacted by construction, gives you an opportunity to get a detour route exactly to that business, and want to encourage everybody to do their best to support these businesses. We know this is a struggle, and if we're all looking out for our businesses, we're going to get through okay. So I wanted just to make those acknowledgements. And then lastly, also, summer is right around the corner. Our Parks and Rec Department has just opened summer program registration for city residents. So I want you to go to the website. I want you to be able to sign up for these programs. KZ Parks offers free and affordable programming for kids, youth ages five to 18. So please go to the website, check it out. You can also register in person at the Parks and Recreation Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, COO Lamb. I appreciate that. I just wanted to follow up with one of your comments there. I know that it is going to be a tough, tough time for one of the foundational components of our community, and that's our local businesses. And we're not going to make it easy when we're tearing up streets in front of businesses longstanding and just opening. And I know we're all hearing from businesses that are concerned about that. And I know that that is something that we're concerned about also, as part of our fabric and our infrastructure here in the city. So we're sorry. And in the meantime, whatever we can do, if you have any other suggestions, please provide those to administration, too. Trying to do what we can to try to ameliorate that challenge that's going to be there for everybody. Thank you again, COO Lamb. Now is the time on our agenda for public comments. This is not a time for dialogue with the commission, but it's an opportunity for anyone who wants to express their comments and get something into our minutes here. Please come forward. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Toby Hannah-Davies, and I do live in the city. And I am very pleased to make sure you know about the groundbreaking for the tiny Houses of Hope. It's a very easy time and date to remember, 4/4 at 4:00 p.m. this Thursday, April 4, 4:00 p.m. on the corner of North Street and Northwest Edge, where there's a big banner showing how beautiful the three new tiny houses will be. That's just the first phase. There's more coming. I hope you each have a card like this inviting you. For everybody who would like to know more, you can just go to the website, hopethroughnavigation.org. Hope through navigation. You could probably find it, but just in case, hope-thru is T-H-R-U-navigation.org. Everyone's invited. Everyone who's concerned about affordable housing. This is a very exciting example of a kind of housing that's so badly needed in our community because it's for the people who are turned down time after time by many, many property owners. So I'm very excited about this, and I'm very happy that Gwendolyn Hooker, the inspiration, the visionary, is going to tell you whatever I forgot.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Anderson, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, and all of you wonderful people here. I don't really have a whole lot to add. I just want to refresh some people's memories and remind others that have been here from the beginning that this is a project that has been very long in coming. We have worked very, very hard to create and provide affordable housing for people with criminal backgrounds and people with substance use disorder history. And we are so excited to have partnered with the city from the very beginning in acquiring the land, with having Director Kik on our committee. Like, there's been so many pieces and parcels to make this project come to where we're going to be at on Thursday at 4:00 o'clock. And this is really a celebratory time, not just for Kalamazoo as a whole, but also for the many people that we're going to be able to house that's going to be affordable, and it's going to be nice, and it's going to be safe, and it's going to be a great environment for people that want to put their life back together. And we know that this is a city of second chances. I don't have to remind many of you about the housing ordinance that really led way to this project, as well as the zoning that actually Christina Anderson and Rebecca Kik also did a lot of time diligent, heart-staking work on actually making a zone and a zoning area that was going to be conducive to this tiny house project. So we are so grateful for the city of Kalamazoo that kind of went along this journey with us, because it's been a journey, but always rooting for us and always being able to help us when we needed that support. And so the last thing that we're going to ask for you all to do, well, the last time for this time, is to actually win. The Sherlin Parsons and that department is going to bring to you a request for changing the money that you afforded us, which was $100,000, affording that back to Hope Through Navigation. Originally, that money was awarded to Northside Association for Community Development due to the fact that we were not a 501(c)(3) at the time. We are now a 501(c)(3). We have been for at least three years, and we own the property that the tiny houses are going to sit on. So we just need that money to actually come to Hope Through Navigation now. And so we thank you so very much. We look forward to hopefully seeing as many as possible on April the 4th at 4:00 p.m. And it's open to the public. So come out and see what a little thinking outside the box can do for the city of Kalamazoo. Thank you so much, and see you all soon.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mission. My name is Nathan Browning, and I'm part of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee for the city. I work with Nolan Bergstrom on that committee. And I also work with Philip Dorlag, who is from Whiteman. And I want to comment on the regular agenda, item four, about the redesign of Michigan Avenue. We've worked with Whiteman many times throughout the history that I've been on the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. And I just want to reaffirm to this commission their dedication to listen to the citizens of Kalamazoo, to take their concerns into account, and to respond accordingly in the way they design. This redesign of Michigan Avenue is a huge effort, very complex. There's a lot of moving parts, literally and metaphorically, a lot of moving parts. And having this outside source of assistance for our city staff can only make the project better. We know that just from the small changes that city staff have already advocated for and changed on Michigan Avenue have led to reductions in vehicle crashes, a lot safer environments for pedestrians and for vehicle owners and automobile drivers. And it's made for a more pleasant experience for the businesses that are on there. La Familia Cafe, one of my favorite restaurants in Kalamazoo, outdoor seating, it's a little bit quieter, it's a little bit more pleasant. And taking this redesign to the next step is going to bring Kalamazoo to another level. And I just want to advocate for that collaboration with Whiteman, as it will be a really good thing for the city of Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Rachel Bennett. I come here tonight to provide my enthusiastic support for the innovative and necessary city design changes being implemented throughout Kalamazoo. I also want to thank you all for having the visionary and bold leadership required to advance these initiatives, even in the face of pushback from supporters of the outmoded status quo. Our family chose Kalamazoo as a place to move to after over a decade in Chicago. My husband works remotely, and I'm a nurse, so we could have our pick of where to live. I've never lived in a city with less than a million people, but for years grew tired of the hustle and bustle of big city life. I dreamed of a progressive city closer to nature, where arts and culture reigned, but that still had a strong working middle-class, salt-of-the-earth ethos. And so I went on a search for a place where we could move our family with three little kids to build a long-term sense of home. We explored Madison, Wisconsin, Columbus, Ohio, and Ann Arbor. On a whim one day, I asked my husband, "What's that town you went to college in like, anyway?" And so I planned our first exploration trip to Kalamazoo, Michigan. Our first stop was the Kalamazoo Farmers Market, where vendors and residents chatted and mingled, where children frolicked around, good food smells wafted through the air, and heirloom tomatoes and rainbow chard were actually affordable. From then on, we came to Kalamazoo every few months to check out the vibe. There was just one thing that we kept noticing over and over again. What was up with the downtown? Of course, I realized it wouldn't be like Chicago, but where were the bike commuters like Traverse City and Madison? Where were the lingering groups of friends like Ann Arbor? Where were the shop after shop with customers strolling and exploring like Holland, Michigan? In my endless research of Kalamazoo while still living in Chicago, one day I came across an interview of Rebecca Kik, standing on the side of the interstate freeway-like Michigan Avenue, talking about the need for changes to the layout of downtown. Around that time, I read the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 master plan, and again noted how the city leadership was being proactive in new urbanism restructuring of the city. It was a pivotal point in our decision to move to Kalamazoo. Now that we have lived in Kalamazoo for three years, I see the changes in action, and I'm eager for the future. In Chicago, we were a one-car family, and we want to continue to be that. Financially, it makes best sense for us, and we want to make the best decisions we can for the future of Mother Earth. Bike lanes and city redesign aren't just pretty things for us. They are necessary for the way that our family moves around the city. The naysayers are disheartening at best and toxic at worst. I urge you all to continue to be a visionary commission by pushing back at the past while moving forward to the future. The future is a walkable, bikeable, greener, and more vibrant city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Excuse me. Sorry.
Bless you.
Ross, I live here. I live in Hillcrest. And like the two before me, I just want to, I guess, express my thanks for the work you're doing with infrastructure in the city of Kalamazoo. There's two things that I would like you guys to know about me. The first is I am a father of three small children, and the second is I am an avid biker. I bike year-round. I often bike with one, two, or all three of my children on the bike behind me. And the things that you're doing to this city I find very heartening. And it's not just because it's making it safer for me and my small children to bike around the city, to bike downtown, but because you're revitalizing the city. In my opinion, cities go one of two ways, because they're not static. They're either going to be fluid and grow and evolve, or they're going to stagnate and shrink and crumble. And the work you're doing, I believe, is going to do the former. And if we want to attract more people, talent, and treasure to our city to help it grow and really thrive, we have to make it the kind of city that those people want to come to. I think the work that you guys are doing is doing just that. So thank you very much, and continue what you're doing.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
My name is Richard Vorman. I live at 2419 Carlisle Drive in the city of Kalamazoo in the Winchell area, where we have lived for over 30 years now. And in full disclosure to my comments, I'm also a member of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee here. I'm here primarily to express my support for the continued transformation of downtown to two-way traffic on Michigan Ave., and in particular, want to support the contract that is in Agenda Item H4, to which the previous speakers have spoken already. I think this is a key project along with the ongoing conversion of Kalamazoo Street and the complex Mishkal connection to Stadium Drive and West Main Street. This whole system fits together into, I think, a project that will join us up, as we've always wanted to be, with Western Michigan University, and with K College, and also with the new event center, so that the whole portion now can become a much more pedestrian-friendly environment with easy street crossings, hopefully with slower traffic, but still traffic because of signaling or maybe some signals will travel slowly, but still at a steady pace through the city when needed. And above all, that along with this will come a good deal of pedestrian safety, as well as the very much-needed bike lanes that fit in with the whole environment. What I really want to do, though, is express my support to the Public Works Division of the city, and in particular, the engineers and the contractors, Whiteman and Associates in particular, for which the contract is going tonight, for this immensely complex project. I think the engineers and the planners face an incredibly daunting task of changing the streets to one, to two-way, I mean, and also incorporating all of the other improvements immediately added to this. And it's taken place over a number of years and through many different stages. So I think it's very important that we all have patience in this project, and I would hope maybe that we could see almost a public relations campaign from the city to the public saying something like, "Please be patient with us. Please do whatever you can to support our downtown merchants, in particular, Michigan News Agency, and many others, and restaurants, and everything like that," because I think the support is there, but it's going to take time. And I think the residents all need to understand that it's going in stages, and it's complex, and it's going to take a while, but it is really going to be worthwhile in the end, because we have a very vibrant city here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Pass it to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Tina. I live on Lake Street. I live next to the last green space in my neighborhood. We are about ready to flood. I know you know what's going to happen, because your ponds are really full. Those pictures that I got, I wrote on the back of them, and I wrote the dates of when I took them. It shows you different areas. It shows you the storms, storm drains in the street. It shows you how much water is in them. I went over to Forest Street today, right there by the ponds, between the two ponds. There was a pile of leaves just packed, all on them. I cleaned them out, and I took a picture of how much water is already in there. And we haven't even rained really yet. So that means there's going to be a really bad flooding season. And I wish you guys would do something with the infrastructure in my neighborhood and fix this flooding problem. You throw money all over the place. I understand things need fixed, but why should your residents and homeowners that have been here all their life and forever, seniors, I'm a senior, I work two jobs, just so I can put a new furnace in every four years. My furnace now has made it five years this time. But if we flood while it's cold, it'll ruin my furnace, as it always does. And then I have to come out of pocket to replace it. And also, at Crosstown Ponds, you have one of your barrels floating in it, and a couple trees. Axel Creek has had a big tree across the creek ever since the ice storm last year. It's still there. Your storm drains are overflowing, guys. When they get ready to overflow... And I think the residents all need to understand that it's going in stages, and it's complex, and it's going to take a while, but it is really going to be worthwhile in the end because we have a very vibrant city here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Pass it to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Tina. I live on Lake Street. I live next to the last green space in my neighborhood. We are about ready to flood. I know you know what's going to happen, because your ponds are really full. Those pictures that I got, I wrote on the back of them, and I wrote the dates of when I took them. It shows you different areas, it shows you the storm drains in the street, it shows you how much water is in them. I went over to Forest Street today, right there by the ponds, between the two ponds. There was a pile of leaves just packed, all on them. I cleaned them out and I took a picture of how much water is already in there, and we haven't even rained really yet. So that means there's going to be a really bad flooding season, and I wish you guys would do something with the infrastructure in my neighborhood and fix this flooding problem. You throw money all over the place. I understand things need fixed, but why should your residents and homeowners that have been here all their life and forever, seniors, I'm a senior, I work two jobs, just so I can put a new furnace in every four years. My furnace now has made it five years this time. But if we flood while it's cold, it'll ruin my furnace, as it always does, and then I have to come out of pocket to replace it. And also, at Crosstown Ponds, you have one of your barrels floating in it and a couple trees. Axle Creek has had a big tree across the creek ever since the ice storm last year. It's still there. Your storm drains are overflowing, guys. When they get ready to overflow, we're going to flood. And if you see one picture on Birdie Street by Crosstown, you'll see where the water is coming up out of the storm drain in the street. It's not coming up from the ponds, it's coming right up from the storm drain, because there's no water nowhere around it. And I just wish you guys would listen and do something. You keep trying to take my green space away. That's all we have to help us with flooding. That's all we have, guys, come on. I've been saying this now seven years. Seven years I've asked you to please try to do something, something with the flooding. You know, we're poor people. I live on the south side of town. It's a poor neighborhood, it's a very diverse neighborhood, but when we flood, we're trapped. We're trapped for three, four days at a time. I have to pack a flood bag and I have to find somewhere to stay, because I can't stay in my home, I can't get to my jobs. If I can't get to my jobs, I can't pay my bills. And as far as you guys helping us, because I work two jobs, I can't get help with my water bill, because I work two jobs, because I make too much money, even though I struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Rachel Behr. I'm a resident of the city, and I guess in disclosure, I'm also a member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Corporation Board. But I'm here as your friendly neighborhood bicycle commuter, hi. But I'll have the record reflect that I drove here tonight, because that was the reasonable thing to do. And I also work downtown, and I'm a pedestrian downtown, and I use the transit, and all of those things are going to be easier with the redesign of Michigan Avenue and conversion to two-way. So I am here just to support that project, urge you to support it. It's an investment in safety, it's an investment in climate action, it's an investment in equity and in sustainable economic development. So, I thank you, I commend the city for your inclusive action to get community input into these massive projects we are undertaking, it's a big deal, and you're doing it well. So, thank you, keep going.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello? All right, there we go. Good evening, Commissioners. This is my first time at a city hall ever, so I'm a little bit nervous, but I have watched many other commissions live on YouTube, so thank you for that. I'm currently here to voice my support for the Item Line H4 in the City Commission Agenda Report. We are living during an inflection point where decarbonizing as soon as possible is of utmost priority. The item to fund the design of two-way conversion is a step in the right direction, as many of you already know and as people here have stated. Though the city of Kalamazoo can't single-handedly change the world, we can do our part to move in this proper direction. According to the city, since the installation of the bike lanes back around August, we've seen a reduction by thirty-three percent in crashes, and I would gladly take, you know, a human being's safety over an arbitrary number like traffic flow that just measures how many metal boxes move through our downtown area. But we don't have to choose between human beings and traffic. As we are seeing through sales numbers and such, electric bike sales are actually outselling electric cars currently. More and more people are switching to electric bikes as a form of real transportation, replacing their car and sizing down. I would suggest people watch the Street Projects webinar that was streamed on January 9th, 2024. It's by Dennis Radolf, who you already know, who is Kalamazoo's traffic engineer. He has many insights, since he is a professional, on how to and how not to make a road. He points out that there's always been parking on Michigan Ave., and that there have always been cars speeding next to them at around fifty to sixty miles per hour. We don't live in a freeway, as many people might be shocked to find out. The fact of the matter is, is it's about the built environment. Study after study has proven that people will drive at whatever speed they feel most comfortable driving. If you build a road where people feel like they can go sixty, they will go sixty. Obviously, enforcement is an issue, obviously, of course, the speed limits and such, but there's only so much the police can do, and they are spread thin as is. Randolph says, and I'm paraphrasing here, so, you know, like, go watch that, where modern traffic safety and engineering is designing roads for a specific speed and not building the road and then posting the speed limit after it's done. The city is arguably undertaking one of the most important construction projects in its history with the two-way conversion. M.D.A. made a mistake, I think we all agree on that, and the city is trying to fix their mistake. Along with working on the conversion, the document also includes work to be done on our aging water and sanitary sewer systems. This is an all-around win for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
Commissioners, hello, I'm Tom Holm, and I live at 1322 Cherry Street. I am the president of Bike Friendly Kalamazoo, and I'm here to speak about my support for the city of Kalamazoo's project to rebuild Michigan Avenue to two-way traffic. Michigan Avenue is probably the most important corridor in the city, and it's time for improvement. Bike Friendly Kalamazoo appreciates the temporary bike facility on Michigan Avenue, and now we support the city's plan to improve access for drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists. So, bikes are transportation, and bicycles are for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Millie Boutwell. I moved to Kalamazoo in 2022 to support what we're talking about tonight with the bike infrastructure and everything that entails. I'm a student at Western Michigan University, and in my time in the city of Kalamazoo, I have already been hit by a public school bus. And since moving to Michigan Avenue right here to additionally support this bike lane program, I've witnessed all sorts of things. I do think that this is a giant step in the right direction, and I have seen the conversion before and after, and it's already increasingly, you know, day-to-day safer than it was before August. Still, on my way here tonight, I saw multiple cars parked in the bike lane. I think that's unacceptable with our brand-new police department stationed right downtown. Daily, I witness drivers exceeding the speed limit by double or more, and it's extremely dangerous. I think the most dangerous portion on my side of the street is where Portage Avenue comes in at the turn. I witness semi-trucks making last-minute lane changes. I have almost been struck in my vehicle by cars not following the rules of the road at that dangerous intersection. I believe that this is a step in the right direction for numerous reasons. Monetarily is one, because we know that our road infrastructure is unsustainable and is bankrupting our city, but cities across the country. That's unacceptable for me and the people who come behind me to this city that has three universities. We want to keep people here in the city, we don't want to keep losing them to cities around us. Another one, besides financial reasons, would be the life, the loss of life. In the United States, we lose over forty thousand people every year to car-related incidents. I think that is unacceptable. If any of you know a nurse, know a doctor, know a police officer, or in the past three years have said something along the lines of, you know, "Support our nurses," I think this is also a step into aiding those groups. You know, nurses, excuse me, nurses should not have to witness the effects of someone going through a windshield of a displaced hip. And, yeah, bikes are for everyone, and if anyone wants to ride with me to school one day, I highly encourage you to hit me up. Let's go for a bike ride. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and city staff. Pete Common Souley. I'm a business owner in downtown Kalamazoo, have been with my family, with my son Paul, for the last twenty-five years. We live on the West Gateway, but we have a business on the West Gateway, which we feel like we live at. That might be the right answer. But we have been a proponent for traffic calming for the twenty-five years we've been there. We participated initially years ago in the two-way street exploration, where affordability made it a dream and not a possibility. We're revisiting it now, and now the most transformational part of the project vision, which is West Michigan Avenue, which draws the most emotion, the most negative feedback, the most positive anticipation from people, vision, and those wanting to keep the old. We're here tonight as a business to support two-way street conversion and West Michigan redesign, dealing with the fact that in 1976, when I moved to Kalamazoo, I moved here because I thought it was a visionary city. I thought it had the vision, it had the size, it had the leadership in order to take it into the 21st century. We're now at 2020, and we're reaching that vision. So, I congratulate this commission, I encourage this commission to support city staff and their continued view with the two-way street conversion, and I invite those people that have concerns, negative concerns about any change on West Michigan or two-way streets, this planning design for West Michigan is their opportunity to come and offer input, suggestions, and get the feedback, which might help them be able to clarify their views on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Goesch with Discover Kalamazoo, the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Kalamazoo County, and I come here with my strong and unequivocal support of the two-way street conversion. We've heard from many residents of Kalamazoo tonight and business owners about the impact on residents and businesses in favor of this conversion, and I'd ask for a minute to you also to think about visitors to Kalamazoo. Downtown Kalamazoo is the most visited, the most visited place in Kalamazoo County by people who live out of town, by a three-to-one ratio, with the next largest being Western Michigan University. And imagine yourself as a visitor to Kalamazoo and expecting a downtown experience like they have in many other cities, communities that were mentioned tonight, Madison, Columbus, Ann Arbor, and then come to Kalamazoo and see two imposing highways right in the center of our crown jewel of downtown. They artificially constrict the movement of visitors to Kalamazoo. They segment downtown and discourage people from exploring and discovering more of what downtown Kalamazoo has to offer. And I believe that that inhibits the economic potential of downtown Kalamazoo for the visitor economy. And much like was discussed today, it will be painful. The construction will be painful. It will be painful for Discover Kalamazoo, as we need to explain to visitors how they can navigate around those changes. Discover Kalamazoo is more than willing to put up with that short-term pain for the long-term gain that would become from a transformed downtown Kalamazoo. So I appreciate your consideration of this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anderson, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. I'm Jonas Peterson. I'm the CEO of Southwest Michigan First. Thank you for the time this evening. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 4 and share my enthusiastic support for the contract for design, two-way street conversion on Michigan Avenue. We, at Southwest Michigan First, we are very supportive of the continued transformation of downtown into two-way traffic. We believe this initiative aligns perfectly with our shared vision for a more vibrant and pedestrian-friendly downtown. Two-way streets have been shown to encourage slower driving speeds, increase visibility for storefronts, and promote safer conditions for pedestrians and cyclists. It's going to take some pain to get there, to the vision that you have, that we have, but ultimately, we believe our community will be better off, and our businesses will be better off. Particularly excited about not only the two-way street conversion, but the even larger vision for downtown. When you add in a new event center, new residential development, and improvements at the festival site, we have a chance to create a downtown environment that is truly special, and I believe this is a great step in that direction. Again, share my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Dean.
I'm Dean Howke. I am the owner of the Michigan News Agency at 308 West Michigan Avenue and the building at the corner of Michigan and Church. I have had the opportunity to talk to you numerous times in the past. You know my history, many of you, but let me just briefly tell you. I am called a war baby. I was born in 1939 in Baguio, Philippine Islands. My mother, my sister, and I spent the Second World War in Santa Tomas Internment Camp, Manila, Philippine Islands, as prisoners of war. I lost my blood father to that war. The first time I ever was safe was when my uncle and aunt, who lived right up on Oak Street, brought my mother, my sister, and I to Kalamazoo, Michigan. My second home was on Stewart Avenue when my mother married my stepfather. I became the lover of Michigan Avenue and the Michigan News. In the beginning, I got to stuff newspapers and sweep the floors. The family story is that when he brought us into the news, I leaned back and said, "Oh, wow, we have to marry Mr. Vince, this is a marvelous place." And Kalamazoo is a marvelous place. I am here to encourage you to understand that we need to go back to two-way streets. Let me tell you what I did in high school. I walked from Stewart Avenue to the old, you guys call it Old Kalamazoo Central. But to Kalamazoo Central, by 3:10, I was done each day. I was on the register at the Michigan News by 3:30 and worked until 5:30, went home every day to dinner, feeling like I had a mission in life, and yes, I do. We were in Seattle, my husband, my daughter and I, when my pop called to tell me that he had given, and all of you had given Michigan Avenue to the state. Broke my heart. I told him, "You were all fools, they were all fools." He told me I was wrong. A month later, he called back to tell me I'd actually been right. I can give you one specific example. We had, we developed film, and every day, people would drop in by nine, out by five. We lost that, we lost all of that, and we are losing all of our businesses in Kalamazoo. So, please, take us back to two-way and let us...
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to take advantage of the public comment, period? I want to thank everyone that took the time and made the effort to provide comments for this meeting, appreciate it very, very much. And now we are on to the consent agenda. COO, Lam.
Thank you. Item G1, approval of a contract supplemental with Peters Construction for the 2023 Sidewalk Gap Project in the amount of $120,000. G2, approval of a professional service agreement with the Northern Pump and Well Company for well rehabilitation and associated maintenance in the amount of $158,965. Three, approval of a purchase of three vans from the Gornow Ford through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $163,761. Four, approval of a contract with LD DASSA Associates Incorporated for the reconstruction of Water Station 26 in the amount of $232,140. Six, approval of the Second Amendment to the Employment Agreement with City Manager Jim Ritzema. Seven, approval of an amendment to the Grant Agreement and a Budget Amendment with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the engineering and design phase of the Reed Court Flood Plane Project in the amount of $89,745. Eight, approval of the appointment and assignment of city commissioners to various committees, boards, and commissions. Nine, approval of the mayor's appointment of Jessica Thompson to the Downtown Development Authority and Downtown Economic Growth Authority boards for a term expiring on March 31st, 2028. Ten, approval of the following appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The reappointment of Tiffany Burns to the Community Development Act Advisory Committee as the East Side Neighborhood Representative for a term expiring on March 31st, 2027. The reappointment of Chelsea Vieri to the Community Development Act Advisory Committee as an at-large member for a term expiring on March 31st, 2027. The appointment of Damaris Potter to the... to the Environmental Concerns Committee for a term expiring on January 1, 2027. The appointment of David Deback to the Environmental Concerns Committee for a term expiring on January 1, 2027. The reappointment of Joseph Holler III to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. Approval of the proposed settlement in the 2023 State Circuit Court case Bianca Wilson versus City of Kalamazoo for $450,000. 12, resolution to vacate the northern 17 feet of West Water Street between North Park Street and Northwestditch Avenue. This item will be postponed until April 15, 2024.
Thank you very much, COO Lamb. So commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 4 and 6 through 11, and postpone item 12 until April 15, 2024, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is our motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Kirk Moss, please call a roll.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, abstaining from 11 and 12.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. And now we are on to our regular agenda. COO Lamb.
Item H1, approval of a construction agreement with Graphic Packaging International and James E. Fulton Excavating for the construction of wastewater systems in the amount of $2,164,591.50, and authorize the city manager to approve up to $500,000 in project contingencies for additional project costs.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Is there a report on this item?
Yes, I'd like Director Baker to come forward. He'll be doing a presentation for items H1 through H3 all at once.
Welcome back, Director Baker.
All right, bear with me while I get everything set up.
Will do.
All right, it looks like everything's working. So thank you, Mayor, Your Honor, Vice Mayor, Chief Operating Officer Lamb, City Attorney. We've got just a brief presentation for everybody tonight to kind of explain what this project is, give you some background on, you know, how we got to this point and where we would like to go to talk about some project steps, specific steps taken within this project. We'll summarize some project costs and we'll talk about a timeline, both, you know, up to where we are today and then in the future moving forward. And we'll summarize with our recommended actions. So, you know, just kind of getting into the background. This project, first and foremost, is another odor mitigation project, one of many that we have been working on at the Kalamazoo Water Reclamation Plant. We've been able to complete several odor mitigation projects over the last four-to-five-year period, originating back in 2019, where we really started to focus on odor mitigation and treatment, thanks in part to some substantial changes in technology, some upgrades in technology that gave us the ability to objectively track and analyze odors. And so that was really a major milestone and turning point for our team of engineers and the staff at the KWRP, is that with the EnviroSuite system in place, we've got continuous 24/7 data going all the way back to 2019. We know we are successful in the work that we have been doing. We have been able to demonstrate through that continuous air monitoring that our projects have been successful. We have reduced the background concentration of odor in the community by over 89% since 2019. So that's a pretty remarkable stat. And that tells us, that gives us confidence that the work we are doing is the right work and we're going to continue in that, in that work. So, you know, this pipeline that we're talking about, what is, what is it? You know, what is the history behind it? What is its intended use? And how can we improve it going forward? To give you some perspective, this pipeline was originally designed and installed between 1964 and 1967. It was a three-and-a-half-mile interceptor pipeline that spanned from, if you look at the image there on the screen, I don't know how well you can make that out, but towards the top of that red line there representing that interceptor-class sewer is approximately the wastewater treatment plant or, you know, the KWRP. At the lower, kind of right-hand side of it, towards the bottom of the screen, is east of Sprinkle Road, so outside of the city. This pipeline was a partnership between Kalamazoo Township and the City of Kalamazoo, also now serves over into Comstock Township. This, this pipeline was originally built really kind of to serve a customer group that was industrial, largely industrial, and a unique customer group, a customer group that was built along the Kalamazoo River. So this pipeline doesn't go in-street and cross-street like most of our infrastructure does. This is over the land and through the woods to the wastewater plant we go, pipeline. And so to improve that is going to take some additional over-the-river and through-the-woods work to get back to the wastewater treatment plant. You know, so continuing to look at this pipeline and as it's evolved over the years, we saw that over about a 40-year period, those customers that the pipeline was originally built for have essentially faded away into some of the rich history of Kalamazoo. There's different customer groups that are now in place and the flows are tremendously different. We have changed the inputs to that pipeline. We rerouted the southern contributors to that pipeline. So that pipeline in 2012 was rerouted to a different interceptor and was abandoned that entire section south of the KWRP and where Graphic Packaging, as the last customer had their, where they introduced their flow to it. So on the screen now, we've got an image. It's a little bit of a blue line and that shows kind of the current, what's there today, what is currently serving Graphic Packaging. And then the dash line represents that abandoned line. Now, we know, we now know through some, you know, work and investigation done by some consultants that we hired. We obtained a report in July of 2020 that identified the design elements of this sewer. It was overdesigned. It was very large in diameter. And the reason for that is all those customers that did exist 40 years ago are not in place today. In fact, and we rerouted that line in the areas south of here. This line also has, you know, as it was built in the 1960s, has some very large hydraulic jumps. These are vertical differences in grade where the pipe literally falls six or 10 or more feet and that creates a tremendous amount of turbulence and disruption to that flow path. This pipeline also presented a direct connection to the KWRP raw sewage wet well. And so you could imagine that a pipeline that is underutilized, it's only half-full perhaps, and it's got a kind of a direct pathway, is that it has the ability to convey odors from one source to the other like an open hallway would. And so there's been many changes now to our proposed design. So we've taken what we learned from that 2020 report. We've incorporated kind of a continuous-grade, smooth-flow approach. We've got a manhole design where we actually have a 24-inch cast iron pipe inside a manhole. And then that pipe is sealed up and has flanges just like we would with a water main, so that if you were to come out and open a manhole and look down, you would see an image such as this. You see a T with a blind flange on the top and that is a completely sealed system. So if we had to go into the line, we could, we could isolate, go in there on both those covers and get into it. However, it's not open. It's not open to the atmosphere in any part of this new design. So that's something that was the engineers really focused on. It also will discharge the KWRP below the water line of the wet well, so there's kind of a natural water seal that will prevent any, any migration of odors between KWRP and GPI. This project will also eliminate the junction chamber on GPI property, which had been a potential source of odor contribution. So I've got kind of on the screen here a profile view, which is like a side cutaway view of what the structure would look like with the modifications made to it at the GPI clarifier outfall. So the flow would go from, if we're looking at this screen, from right to left. And it goes into what our new design has created, essentially a funnel that then will gently transition the flow to a new alignment. And so just to kind of talk about some flow characteristics that we can all visualize and understand, it just, you know, imagine with me for a moment, take a glass, your favorite glass of, we'll assume it's City of Kalamazoo water, and then just take it, just dump it out in the sink. And, you know, that's very energy-intensive. It creates a lot of splash. It releases a lot of energy. And it, you know, is, you know, pretty violent in terms of, you know, water moving around, might even splash you. Now take that same glass of your favorite City of Kalamazoo water and pour it through a funnel. And when you pour it through the funnel, it's going to smooth the flow out. It's going to present some gentle flow into the sink and not create all the splash and the turbulence. And it's not going to aerate. So that's what we've designed here, is a 10-foot-tall, four-foot-wide tunnel, excuse me, funnel that then discharges down to a two-foot pipe and then gently conveys the flow then to the treatment plant. This pipeline also has another couple of design, unique design features. You'll see it in the correspondence, in the packets that are recommended. It also has a, what we're referring to as a bypass and overflow structure. This is a structure that we built to accommodate the ability to shut this new pipeline down if we have to for maintenance, that we could then use a pump bypass so that we could perform maintenance or whatever and use a force main to pump around this area. That structure would also serve as overflow structure. If there were an overflow that did occur on GPI property, it would go into overflow structure and then go over to a, another sewer. So, you know, we're going to transition, kind of talk about project steps. What steps have we been taking or did we take up into this recommendation today? We started back in 2022 where we purchased the pipe. So we purchased the pipe ahead of time. We were experiencing material shortages at the time and we had a concern that if we awarded a contract but did not have pipe on hand, that, that contract could go into multiple years and stall out with a lack of materials. We received that pipe in the spring of 2023. We then issued invitations for bid in the spring of 2023. We had a pre-bid meeting that was well-attended, but ultimately, no contractors submitted bids. As that project team, you know, reviewed what some alternatives would be for them, you know, moving forward, we considered that we would need some alternative project delivery methods. We'd have to try something else. So one of the things we looked at was a construction management agreement. Specifically, what construction management agreements are is that it takes and awards a project to a third party. That third party is then responsible to deliver the project. This is common in school systems. Oftentimes, schools will expand via voter-supported bonds. And often when they do that, they hire a construction management firm that handles all the design, the trades, the bidding of the project. And it's all handled by a third party. There's also, this is common in water and wastewater as well when we have very complex project components such as coordination, schedules, coordination amongst several trades. And what this gives the project manager the autonomy and the authority to then work with multiple different trades and multiple different concurrent projects to kind of pick project priorities and allow for different scopes of work to happen at different times. So we took this knowledge of this project delivery method. We approached Graphic Packaging International and asked them, you know, "Hey, would you be interested in performing a construction management contract for us, for the city, to deliver this project?" GPI was supportive of that con, of that concept. And then Public Services, we were supported by the City Attorney's Office and we worked together to kind of create that project management contract, if you will. GPI bid the project out. They did receive two bids for the project. So we have the bid that we're recommending with James E. Fulton. That's a local Kalamazoo excavator. They, their headquarters and offices are on Miller Drive here in City of Kalamazoo. There was also another bidder, which actually was the EPA contractor that's doing the dredging right now. So there was, you know, competition even under this method as well. And so the city, with support of City Attorney's Office, we worked through with Graphic Packaging International and developed an agreement, you know, to kind of work out the milestones throughout the first quarter of 2024. To summarize project costs, we've got about $2.1 million in construction and administration of the project itself. We've outlined a contingency and we've set that aside with some certain priorities given to the city manager to be able to execute those approved changes as need be through the execution of the contract. We also have a recommendation for a construction engineering contract with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers to represent our interests as a city, provide daily onsite inspection of this pipeline and of the work to make sure that it meets our specifications as well as Eagle specifications. And then there's an easement that goes along with this as well. So all in, we're about $2.9 million, which includes a $500,000 contingency. In terms of timeline, we already have the pipe. That pipe was procured back in 2022. The proposed construction start date, this would be the earliest we could start if everything went in our favor, including the EPA kind of wrapping up where they're at with their dredging and then moving to a northern site. You know, this project, if everything was approved, could start as early as, say, April 30th or the beginning of May. Rough timeline for that. We could expect to have a tie-in operational on the new route sometime in September. And then abandonments and removals would occur, you know, through December and then final restoration and project completion in July of 2025. So the recommended actions, we've got three agenda items, H1, H2, H3. And we're recommending approval of a construction agreement with Graphic Packaging International and James E. Fulton Excavating, including a budget and contingency item that's spilled out in the recommendation. We also have a recommendation for the Jones &amp; Henry Engineers Construction Engineering Agreement. And then we have the easement as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the city commission for any comments or questions that I could answer for, for anybody.
Thank you very, very much, Director Baker. I appreciate it. I thought that that was like a little class in engineering for dummies in a way. So I really actually did follow that and I appreciate that explanation. Questions for Director Baker from the commission? Yeah, Vice Mayor Cooney?
So my understanding is then that we are going to spend a minimum of $2,300,000, $400,000, and a maximum of $2,936,000. And the outcome of this, this is an investment that's going to improve the odor situation on the north side and the east side?
That's correct. This project is between 2.5 and $3 million, and the goal of this project is to improve odors in the Kalamazoo community.
So this seems like a strong response to what people have been asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other questions? Commissioner Pradel?
I was just going to make more of a comment.
Okay. Questions for Director Baker, then? I'll see, no more questions this time. So I'm just going to ask you one. I mean, I really appreciate the detailed explanation here, and obviously, this is only one of the things that we've been doing. Are there some other particulars that you think you should mention as far as the whole portfolio of responses that the city's, you know, been undertaking that's brought us to this point?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mary Anderson. So, you know, just to kind of reiterate, you know, where we've been, you know, where we're headed, we really hit a fundamental crossroads in 2019 where we obtained the technology resources to be able to really accurately and objectively track odors. I mean, that was something that we didn't have. Staff would make comments of, hey, we think we're smelling an odor today, or we'd receive calls from the community, hey, I think I smelled something today, and we would track it and logbook it, but it was, you know, what we would kind of refer to as chasing ghosts. So in September 2019, we've got the system in place, and that's the EnviroSuite Monitoring System, and that's out, that's working. We've got 19 sensors in the plant and throughout the community that is tracking odors in every 15 minutes all the way back to 2019. So that's given us the data that we then needed to make changes and react to that. So we installed new centrifuges at the wastewater treatment plant to dry the cake out, to reduce the amount of trucks leaving the plant. We implemented carbon scrubbing units at all of our processes at the wastewater treatment plant. Those carbon scrub units have been up and working wonderfully. In fact, we just went through their first maintenance cycle. That was in December of 2023 where we purchased about $500,000 of new carbon for those units and changed the carbon out in those units. We also started just this year a hydrogen peroxide process that prevents the formation of hydrogen sulfide gas within the wastewater treatment plant and our solids handling process, and we're seeing some positive results from that. We have, we'll be bringing forward to the commission on April 15th, a recommendation to submit a fiscal year 2025 Clean Water State Revolving Fund project plan. So this is for wastewater, and it involves about $36.4 million of improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. There's about seven different project areas that we're focusing on, and three of those projects are specific to odor mitigation. Those projects are, one, to make our hydrogen peroxide system permanent, so we'll have to, you know, build a building around that, create some redundancy in tanks and piping and that sort of thing. We're also looking at that solids handling facility itself and enclosing it and building some more walls and kind of enclosing that space to make it to where the trucks will have to kind of pull into like a garage. All the doors will shut, the truck would stay in there, get loaded, then the doors would open, then it would come back out. So, you know, that's going to be involved. And then there's a third project, which is going to completely revamp all the air handling and air scrubbing that's happening within that building. So if we enclose that space, you know, putting up those garage doors, so to speak, we can now trap that, you know, potential odor source, and then we can scrub it through, you know, could be something like bio tricking filters or carbon scrubbers, we don't quite know what that technology would be yet, but that's, again, three more projects that would be at the wastewater treatment plant that were determined based upon actual data of real-time monitoring of the EnviroSuite sensors in place, running, you know, 24/7 continuous, giving us 15-minute interval data. So we're, you know, really excited on, you know, where we are now today and where we're going. We've got a tremendous amount of support and enthusiasm from the folks at the wastewater treatment plant to, you know, really continue the focus to, you know, reduce and mitigate odors. And again, going back to our first slide, since fall 2019, we've accomplished an 89% reduction in background concentrations of hydrogen sulfide, and we're going to, you know, continue that work. We've got a great portfolio of projects to help support that.
Appreciate that. Very helpful. Once again, any questions from commission? All right, seen none. Thank you again, Director Baker. So anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item, this item H1, which Director Baker just explained to us, actually, he went through H1, H2, and H3 in his discussion, but specifically, we're talking about this construction agreement. Anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? All right, seen, no comments. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to approve additional project costs. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Further discussion? Commission? Commissioner Pradel?
Sure. I just want to thank Director Baker for his presentation. For a second there, I wanted to say breathe because he could tell you were so passionate about just spilling out each of those things that we've done. It's amazing. But I wanted to take a, kind of just a historical rewind here for a second. I've only been on commission for four and a half years, but I've lived in this community my entire life. I grew up on the northeast side. This is a multi-generational issue that has plagued this community for decades. And in just the four and a half years I've been on the city commission, this has been one of the most significant quality of life issues that we've heard from residents, some of the most emotionally charged meetings, difficult conversations from the public that we heard from. And I love these situations when we come to these moments because we're not done, but look how far we've come, and that progress that we've made has come from the community's outpouring of pressure to say that we want to do something about this. This matters to us. This is a major issue that is impacting my quality of life in this community, both from air quality and odor. And I'm just so proud of the three commissions that have worked on this work since 2019 for Director Baker and his team from Public Services who have innovated a huge laundry list of things that he listed off, but not just doing the work, but then measuring and showing that there's demonstrated impact for each of those steps. You know, you hear it said that where you budget and spend your money shows where your values are. This is 2.9 million dollars. This is not a drop in the bucket. This is a significant investment, one of the largest that we've voted on in some time. And this is just a portion of all the millions of dollars we've invested in this work. When we said to the community we were going to do something, we have done it, and this is one more step that we've done it. So I applaud your team for the ability to do this work, and also, beyond just the ability to innovate and do this work, in 2023, you put out the bid, and you got zero responses back. And instead of just saying, oh, well, you know, shoot, we can't do anything about this now, I guess we'll just have to think of some other Plan B, you went back to the drawing board, and you kept working and trying to figure out solutions to make the work continue to work forward. And tonight, you see that creative solution to make that work forward, on top of the fact that you bought pipe a year before you even put the bid out. It's impressive work, and you heard it here tonight, since 2019, an 89% reduction in hydrogen sulfide gas in our air. I can't thank you enough for all your efforts and work on that, and again, thank you so much.
Well said, Commissioner Pradel. Any other discussion or comments on this item? Vice Mayor Hess?
I'd like to echo that, but I was just going to say, like, I'm not an engineer. I think we only have one engineer up here among us who might have fully understood what you were talking about, Director Baker, but again, you gave us a class. You gave us all a class, and it's here for everybody to watch on, you know, on our YouTube channel to help us understand the heavy lift that is this project. And it's why I vote for most of the projects that you bring forward. I have to trust your work. I have to trust it not being an engineer. I know that you've done the work on behalf of the people for the city, and I appreciate you and your team, just like I appreciate the planners who are doing the work on behalf of the streets and the planning that we're doing in the city. So we do have stellar, stellar people working for us in the city, and I hope that we all can continue to trust them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Seen, no other discussion. Deputy Clerk Moss, would you please call the role?
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Thank you very much, commissioners. The motion passes. Next is item H2, Chief Operating Officer Lamb.
Approval of an effluent sewer easement with Graphic Packaging International for the GPI effluent sewer realignment project.
Thank you very much. This was referenced in the comments that Director Baker just provided to us, that we, that's one thing we need, is additional easement there since this line is moving around. Are there any additional questions that commissioners might have about this particular All right, seen none. And I presume you weren't planning any separate easement report here?
No.
No, okay. So without any questions, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? It's item H2. If so, please come forward. Seen, no comments. The recommended action is a motion to approve the effluent sewer easement. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Any discussion, commissioners? Seen none. Deputy Clerk Moss, please call the role.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next is item H3, COO Lamb.
Approval of a professional service agreement with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers LTD for construction engineering services on the GPI effluent sewer realignment project in the amount of $271,500.
Thank you very much, COO Lamb. Once again, this item was covered in the presentation that Director Baker provided. Any particular questions on this item from commission? Seen none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item, H3? Seen no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve the service agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson?
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Any discussion? Seen none. Deputy Clerk?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Now it is time for item H4.
Approval of a contract with Whitman &amp; Associates to design the two-way conversion of Michigan Avenue in the amount of $1,976,459.
Thank you. And is there a staff report on this item?
Yes, I'd like to have Christina Anderson, city planner and deputy director for community planning economic development, as well as Anthony Ladd, our assistant director of public services. They are going to give us a brief presentation on this item.
Welcome, Planner Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Hess, commissioners, city attorney Liel, and COO Lamb. We have a couple of things we want to talk about tonight as relates to item H4, which is the approval of a contract with Whitman &amp; Associates, as well as their team, to do the design work for Michigan Avenue. So, excuse the misnumbering, we're going to talk about four things. We're going to talk about, we're just going to ground ourselves in a minute on the why of this work and the why that led us to those successful federal grant applications for funding for these projects. We're going to talk about Streets for All. We're going to talk about specifically this Michigan Avenue project, and of course, get into the detail on timeline and first steps. So we're going to start off with our why. And the why is not only that why are we doing this streets work, it is also the why that we expressed in our grant applications to the federal government for funding, both through the RACE grant as well as the Reconnecting Communities grant. This was our why, this was our story as part of those successful applications. So first is safety. We have a documented crash history in Kalamazoo, particularly in downtown. We have a documented speeding issue in downtown, and you heard from numerous folks at the beginning of the meeting how that makes them feel as they move through downtown, whether it's in a personal vehicle transit as a pedestrian or cyclist. The way to change this documented history is to think about our streets differently, and this work helps us get there. Economic vitality. Back in 2017 with Imagine Kalamazoo, we had a downtown retail market study done with Gibbs Planning Group that helped shape the master plan and Imagine Kalamazoo strategic vision. That study said that the downtown, which we heard from Jane Goche of Discover Kalamazoo, which is the most visited place in Kalamazoo County, is underperforming as an economic generator, as a market generator, not because of market conditions, but because of physical conditions. And the study specifically cited the difficulty in navigating in and around downtown in the key shopping districts. This was supported by anecdotal evidence from business owners as well as their patrons. We repeated this study in 2023 with the assumptions that all of this streets work that we've been talking about and are in the process of doing was complete. What would that mean? How does that change the market forecast? And flip the switch, right? Additional sales, millions of dollars of additional sales are unlocked, and thousands, tens of thousands of square feet of additional business space or expanded existing businesses become unlocked when you have that flowing network that's easy to navigate. Reconnecting downtown, critical for the Reconnecting Communities grant application. Downtown is cut off from the adjacent neighborhoods. To the north, to the east, to the south, our core neighborhoods, north side, east side, Edison and Vine, but also to the west, to Stewart and West Main Hill. We've heard repeatedly from Western Michigan University and Kalamazoo College students, there was just an article in the newspaper by a group of students that are doing service learning through a class on how to get students to stay in Kalamazoo after they graduate, you know, and one of the things they cited was a lack of connection with downtown. It's very hard for students to get downtown because of the street network that exists. And so if it's going to be difficult, students aren't going to do it, they're going to go somewhere else. And, you know, what would be the impact if we had an area that was welcoming to a broader population in Kalamazoo? And some of this work can help do that. Good governance is another one of our whys for this work. It is our job to manage our assets, and this was discussed in the proclamation at the beginning of the meeting today, the importance of maintaining our street network and maintaining it in an equitable way for everyone, making this work, this in Michigan Avenue, as well as the other Streets for All projects, include repair and replacement of utilities, storm, sanitary water, as well as a new road surface. This provides additional, not only is it a benefit for those physically on the street, this is a benefit for those who live or own businesses or own property adjacent to it, right? We're giving the opportunity for improved utility services for today and years into the future. The last why is our community. We have heard repeatedly since the streets were changed in October of 1965, and especially after the Federal Highway did a study in '72 that found that speeds had increased by, I think it was 11 miles per hour through downtown, and there was an increase of accidents just in that short span from when it was converted. Repeatedly, we have plans and discussions at the city level, at the downtown business level, at the citywide level, for what can change and how do we change it? And it really wasn't until recently that those planning and those discussions, that community vision that has been expressed, became more focused and led to some real movement in this work. So Imagine Kalamazoo and the conversations that happened back in 2015 through '17, resulting in the strategic vision and the master plan, the planning and environmental linkage study that the city participated in with MDOT in good faith, that we could come to an agreement on how we could make on how we could make the streets work for our community, which did not, we did not get there, which led to the jurisdictional transfer. So the ability for the street, the city, to manage the streets and shape them based on the community vision. And the 2019, right before COVID hit, we had a series of engagement meetings and worked with CDM Smith Consulting Group to help us understand what would happen if the streets went two-way in terms of traffic flow and movement. So with all those whys, those whys got us pretty far, but it wasn't until that jurisdictional transfer and that clear consolidated community vision through Imagine Kalamazoo did we find a way to get here. Here, which we are partway through completing our Streets for All projects, which will result in a transformational change in our street network and in our downtown. This is a quick snapshot that I wanted to show you. This is from our federal grant applications, and really, again, telling that story, that why we're doing this work, why we're requesting these dollars to fund these projects, and how this aligns with our strategic vision, as expressed through Imagine Kalamazoo. And so you can see, I won't read them to you, but a whole series of the strategic visions, and specifically how this work can have a positive impact on us achieving those. And from telling that story to the federal government, we have the fantastic opportunity to receive funding to get this work done. And that is funding the contract that is before you this evening, specifically the RACE Grant, which provided planning funds. So the planning funds mean design and study, utility analysis, our outreach and engagement. And so $6 million was given to the city for this work. And that is, you know, where the money for this contract is coming from, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second.
Yeah, it's really exciting to be here tonight to talk about the first of several, as you can see, RACE Grant projects that the city has received through the RACE Planning Grant that we were awarded in 2022, and that we brought forth to City Commission last year. So it's really exciting to be here tonight with the first of these projects. And also, as mentioned previously, one of the biggest and largest implication projects, Michigan Avenue. This is a breakdown of the streets and the work that was included in our planning grant for the RACE application in 2022. And you can see, we have a lot more work to come, and we will be coming before City Commission later this year as we work to issue more RFPs for this planning and design work, and in years to come, but also later this year. So just to provide kind of an overview, an update of where we stand in this initiative for Streets for All, we are several years into this initiative citywide, and really getting into the core of our work downtown. We will be beginning work on Michikau later this year, and that will really kick off our work downtown, our presence downtown, that will be there for the next several years. In 2025, we intend to perform work on West Main, Douglas, and begin work on Kalamazoo Avenue. As it stands right now, that project, Kalamazoo Avenue, from Douglas to where they come back, just west of Harrison, it's about 80% complete, and we hope to have some final reviews, final conversations on that before we have our final design plan and give that to MDOT to let them look over it and move that forward for construction next year as well. This project that we're talking about today, Michigan Avenue, we'll design, we have a schedule that we'll show later in the slide presentation, but we intend to start design this year for construction towards the end of 2026 or beginning of 2027, as we begin this design process. Additionally, streets mentioned, South and Level, and Stadium Drive, these other streets, we can begin the designing and planning process. However, we're still, you know, using all of this why and how we got to this point to compete at a national level for additional funding, so that, those are projects that are coming in out years. So as mentioned, our project area for the Michigan Avenue project will go from Michikau East to where Kalamazoo Avenue and Michigan Avenue currently come back together, just west of Harrison there. And then the orange highlight that you see right there is the work that will be done or started in 2025 and continued to 2026 with Michikau, West Main, Douglas, and Kalamazoo Avenue. This contract, RFP, went out in December. It was bid nationally through, using a process that was required by FHWA and MDOT as part of our grant agreement with a qualified, qualifications-based selection process. And in this process, we received multiple bids, proposals from firms, both locally and nation, have a nationwide presence. And through the design review, or the proposal review process, our design team scored these proposals individually, and Whiteman Associates and their team that they had put together as part of their proposal, our scores reflected that this was the firm that best understood what we were hoping to accomplish as a city, what we value most in our projects and in the work that we do, and really had a good grasp of the project itself and capability to carry that out. The total cost was just under $1.98 billion. This, this amount does fall within our budgeted allotment for Michigan Avenue that, that we were given for the RACE Grant. So this, this work will be entirely funded by our RACE Grant that we've received. Some of the parts of this project, some of the deliverables that make up this, this total cost, there's a large, significant effort towards engagement and outreach that Christina will talk about in a second, and obviously the street components, but also, as we've seen with many of our projects for the last few years, we intend to take a complete streets holistic approach. When we are doing work at a street, we are looking at it from a surface level, we're looking at land use adjacent to the street, and we're looking underneath the street to see what kind of upgrades, the utilities, and what opportunities might exist as part of this project. So this is, this will be another prime example of that, along with streetscape, landscaping, environmental and historical review, which for this part of town, one of the oldest in our city, will be quite substantial. And then also MDOT review, contract administration, and final delivery of that plan through the local agency program process.
Sure. So we're going to talk quickly about the parts of the project in a little more detail. I'll start with the one that falls into my house, outreach and engagement. So as, once we get the green light to start up this project with our consultants, we will get to work on the public participation plan for this project with them. Now, what goes into that? The contract itself, the consultants' time have allotted a significant amount of their time in this contract for this work. It's that, that time, and their, and the dollars that we spend on that time, plus staff's time, staff dollars to support the outreach and engagement, as well as our assistance from good marketing, which is helping us communicate projects in downtown related to streets. So a force of the three groups to do outreach and engagement to make sure that we have the design right for Michigan Avenue. Just like Kalamazoo Avenue, there are some things that we know to be kind of truths or foundations for, for the design and for that conversation with the community. We know we need to design a street above ground that handles traffic flow. We know, we have heard over and over again from our downtown community, on-street parking, critical, critical, must remain within that street section. So that gives us the opportunity to use the additional space as our key points of discussion. Where do we put that additional space? How is it used? Who does it serve? And that will be our starting point for these conversations. We will have a number of large format, come all meetings, we'll do a series of small stakeholder meetings, we will be showing up all over downtown, just like we did for Imagine Kalamazoo, or excuse me, for, we did that for Imagine Kalamazoo, but for the Kalamazoo Avenue project, where we were at Lunchtime Live, and Art Hop, and, you know, other downtown events where we were out there knowing that there are people who wanted to talk to us. This project, like Kalamazoo, is unique in that it's not just people who live and work that we need to have conversations with, also those who play in downtown, who might be a little harder to reach if we are knocking on, simply knocking on doors. So outreach and engagement, step one, and will be guided by our public participation policy and the plan that we create, and we will come back before you to provide you that information as we kick off the actual meeting schedule and activities, so everyone's aware of the plan to move forward.
Sure. And just to provide, I guess, a little more detail into, into the project itself, there will certainly be more conversation and more to come, but to give, give kind of a slight preview of some of the items that we're talking about that are wrapped into, into this project, and what Whiteman Associates and our team here at the city will be, you know, delving into and trying to tackle as part of this, this very large, exciting project. In addition to two-way conversion, which not to undersell the lift that that'll be, for almost a mile of Michigan Avenue, we're talking about either an entire reconstruction or rehabilitation of the full width of the street. And as, as you know, that Michigan Avenue kind of varies in width from Michikau all the way through that corridor. So that's going to pose a challenge in and of itself with different varying pavement widths and area that we can work within that right-of-way as we move from west to east. When we are moving from one-way configuration to two-way, we are going to have the opportunity to optimize and totally rethink eight signalized traffic intersections that will require masked arms in both directions. We will be implementing signal optimization throughout that corridor, taking advantage of the opportunity to place conduit in the ground where it doesn't exist so that we can build our traffic signal fiber network, improve communications, not only on Michigan Avenue, but the downtown area as a, as a grid network to better improve traffic efficiencies. As mentioned before, landscaping, streetscaping, we want to take the opportunity to plant trees downtown every time we have the opportunity. Not very often do we have this much of the roadway, road space torn up to where we can provide adequate living space for trees where they can thrive in a downtown environment where typically that, historically, that's, that's pretty difficult to do. Street lighting is something that we're going to be paying large attention to, making sure that we can improve that at everywhere possible, and making sure that there's adequate street lighting throughout that corridor. Again, that adds to a safety and livable space. ADA improvements will be, you know, mandated basically throughout the entire section of Michigan Avenue, at intersections, anywhere that we can make ADA improvements, at traffic signals, to make sure that we're as current and up-to-date as we could be. Bus and bike infrastructure is certainly going to be a part of the conversation, as Christina mentioned, trying to work within that right-of-way space and, you know, find, you know, what, what works best for us through this process. On-street parking will be a large part of this conversation and design. Storm sewer analysis and replacement where it's needed. We have a lot of very old storm infrastructure underneath Michigan Avenue. Again, that's, this is going to be a great opportunity to replace that and upsize it and prepare our infrastructure just in general for the next 100 years. And then also, along with the ADA improvements, sidewalk, we'll be having, you know, new sidewalk that's ADA compliant, as wide as feasibly possible, or that the street use calls for. Underneath the road surface, we have a whole nother host of projects going on, as mentioned, between our water and wastewater utilities. We intend to run a single 24-inch water main throughout the entire, the length of the project for Michigan, from Michikau East to Harrison, and will actually continue from there, but as part of this project, there will be a brand-new, large, 24-inch water main. And then upsizing to 8-inch water main on side streets where it currently doesn't exist, as well as replacing all street-side services that are in need of replacement as part of this water main to switch services over. And new fire hydrant locations as needed to provide our required 300-foot spacing and 100-foot spacing for, as required for the fire department. And on the wastewater side, last but not least, we will have some work at the Michigan Avenue and Westonage intersection, realignment of a 10-inch sewer to where it goes into the outfall of a 42-inch, and a new 8-inch sewer running from Rose Street to Farmer's Alley, and bidirectional cleanouts on existing active sanitary sewer services that will really help our maintenance activities for the future. Another great opportunity, we estimate that will be approximately 100 of those happening at each of those existing sanitary sewer service lateral locations.
Forward to. So obviously, there's a lot of work involved in this project, and we spend a lot of time focused on what we can see when the project is done, and that's the street, how it's painted, where the trees are, what streetscape happens. But there is a lot of work that happens underground, and it's that underground work that's going to serve this community, serve the businesses and the residents, both of today and the future. And without this work, you know, we're not setting ourselves up for that growth, that success that we expect to see in our downtown. So in talking about timeline, if approved tonight, we, you know, we get to work, we get to work pretty quickly. Two clocks started that we're working with. One was the jurisdictional transfer clock back in 2019, which part of our agreement was that we would, at a minimum, improve the surface of all the streets involved of the jurisdictional transfer up to a certain level, and we had to do that within 10 years. So our goal is to do as much of that surface work with these transformational redesign projects, and minimize the resurfacing to meet a deadline, and then, you know, a couple of years later, coming back for a redesign. So that's clock one. Clock two, the RACE Grant, right? We accepted the grant, it is $6 million, we have a number of years to work on it, but there is, there is a clock that we need to be mindful of in order to spend the dollars. So if approved, we will get to work immediately. We will start this summer with outreach. This is a very similar timeline to what we followed with Kalamazoo Avenue. So this summer, we start that groundwork, right? We do the outreach, we do engagement, we get a handle on what utilities are underground, what needs to be improved, what doesn't. Survey work. We'll shift to a phase where we're confirming the engagement, keeping the lines of communication open, on just going back to say, is this what, did we hear correctly? Is this what you heard? Start the environmental study work, start to slowly move the design forward, and so forth, until we get to the point in fall of 2025, where we're ideally putting projects, or we're getting projects ready to go out to bid. And that is, that is where we are now with Michigan Avenue. We are happy to answer any questions that you have on the contract or the project itself as you consider it.
Well, once again, thank you for the extremely detailed and helpful presentation. I wouldn't be surprised if there still might be a question or two, so I guess we'll find out. Are there any questions from Commission for Staff on this particular project? Wow. All right. Yeah, Commissioner Pradel.
All right. I don't want these questions to be perceived as all as I'm not supportive of this. Like, it was one of the main reasons I ran for reelection, because I want to be a part of seeing this through to the finish line. But these are just questions you hear the public and some downtown businesses, you know, bring up from time to time. So you hear about, like, the long-term sustainable path forward for economic vitality, right? So that's the goal, right? We're thinking long-term about how we're going to create an economically vibrant downtown. But we all know, like, there's going to be some short-term pain. You know, you look at the Portage Interchange example of that, you know, that, that went over their timeline, and there were a number of businesses that closed during that period. You know, it was not just the construction, but the pandemic. But there are impacts to businesses. And the hard part is, is when... businesses, and the hard part is, is when you see that short-term impact, you sometimes just jump to conclusions that, hey, see, we told you so, like, we told you this was going to happen when he did this, and you told us it was going to create economic vitality. What can we do besides just say, hey, go down and support small business to truly help them survive and thrive during what's going to be a difficult period?
So I'm going to talk about a couple of things that we have in the works, or things that we've already started. So one is lessons learned. Lessons learned from previous downtown construction projects. I think I've talked about this in front of you all before. We had some consumers, gas and electric work a couple of years ago that really threw us off. We tried to do, we tried to communicate, because that is number one, right? To understand where are the closures, what does it mean, what does it mean today, what does it mean next week, and had a lot of challenges. So lessons learned from that led us to contract with Good Marketing, which is a firm that we have on hand for communication and to assist in outreach for all projects in downtown, both streets and parking. Another place where we're getting some lessons learned, I'll call them our sister city, I don't know if they're one of the official listed sister cities, but South Bend, Indiana, very similar to us in terms of character, went through all of this about five years ago. And so we've already sat down with them once to have a conversation, including, we had the Chamber with us for that meeting, to understand how they supported businesses, the projects that they did, what activities did they do to support businesses during that time, and we'll take those lessons and apply them here in Kalamazoo. We, in terms of construction, you know, we want to make sure that we are maintaining street access, if not all the time, as much as possible. I mean, there may always be an opportunity where we'll need to close briefly if something, a utility is crossing the street, but making sure that we are keeping the flow going is another way to make sure that that area remains accessible. So those are a few of the things that we're doing. Our economic development team is in the process of thinking through what supports they have and how they can support businesses. We have some fantastic organizations in town. We heard Jen Gosh with Discover Kalamazoo talk about how they can help communicate to our visiting population for how they can move in and around and through downtown during construction. So these are all the things that we are, we are trying to work through. We know that construction always provides some level of short-term struggles. Oh, and I'll add another one, the work that Director Baker and his staff are leading right now in, in and around Oakwood Plaza with the construction, Parkview and Whites and Westonage, and the communication that we're doing, the new marketing tools that we're doing, and, you know, using geofencing and other, you know, modern technologies to help us capture those that are in the area, to be able to communicate those changes with them. So again, we are always learning and always doing something new to make sure that we are doing our work better.
Yeah. I think they're definitely one of those opportunities to be really innovative, to show that we're supporting and doing everything we can. One thing I would love to see as well is the same way we're supporting like white box grants or facade grants or the $5,000 small business grants, is to really look at maybe emergency grants for downtown businesses during the span of the major construction, because I do think for some people and some business models, it's going to be hard, it's going to be a hard lift, but it's a very exciting lift, right? I mean, it's worth the, the juice is worth the squeeze, you know, if, so to speak. The other thing I was going to ask you as well is like the timeline based on the 2027 completion of what would be the Michigan section, is around the same time of the completion of the event center. And so I would imagine those aren't going to probably synchronize perfectly. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I think about, and I've heard other people express, is just a concern that you're going to open a giant new event center that's going to have 6,000 to 8,000 people who are coming and going, and then you're going to have really difficult bottleneck congestion around the areas that you're trying to encourage people to come and support a new event center. So I'm just curious, like, what are your teams doing to start thinking about that and mitigating those challenges in advance before we get to that point?
Sure. That's a great question, and it's not, it's not what we're thinking about doing, it's work that we're already doing now with the event center team. We are in really regular communication, almost weekly at this point, it feels like, meetings with the event center team, with our Kalamazoo Avenue Design Team, because Kalamazoo Avenue, obviously, is the northern boundary of the event center area, and that is going to be happening while the event center is being constructed. So we have developed a really strong relationship with that team. You know, it's not a city-driven project, right? It's a private developer, but we have set up some great lines of communication, talking about when they're doing work and when we're doing work, and then we get to also add into that mix, consumers, right? Because consumers, gas and electric, will also be working in that quadrant of downtown over the next couple of years. So we've really opened the lines of communication, spending time, timelining all of our projects. Who's going when? What does it mean? How are we communicating this to the public? And so we are working on all of those fronts. I think the benefit of all this work is when the event center opens, we're going to have, you know, great two-way flow on Kalamazoo Avenue and Mishikau. We are going to have a fantastic mixed-use path on Mishikau that connects the event center and the care, the trailhead at Westonage and Mishikau and Kalamazoo to Western Michigan University, providing a clear path for those who are not traveling by car. We're in conversations about, you know, how we can think about loading and unloading buses. Metro Transit is at the table with us. So we are, we are working to minimize that congestion with all these projects and stepping on each other's toes, knowing that we're all trying to achieve, you know, something, something great for downtown.
Cool. Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other questions from Commissioners? All right. Thank you so much. Once again, I appreciate both of you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this?
Yes, I would like to comment. The commu, and it's Dean Hough, Michigan News, the communication that they were talking about has been established specifically with the Michigan News. I think both of those, our presenters, are doing outstanding job of helping us survive what's going to be a really dangerous situation. And I would add Dennis Randolph's name to that list of people that are trying, working as hard as they can to educate us on what is going to happen in these next years. Also, I would tell you that the reason I am at the Michigan News, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM many days, is because I get to hear all the complaints and talk to people about what's really going on out there. So people stand across the street from me and scream at me, "Do I have to put money in the meters if I'm parked in the middle of the street, Dean?" And I step out and explain what's going on and how we're managing it and the help we're getting. Actually, Christina Anderson and Dennis Randolph stood on my corner of Michigan Avenue, and we talked about how we could make that corner safer. And I now have one of these stop things where you push it, and I'm still out there teaching people that they need to go ahead and push those buttons so that the flashing lights come on, so that they can be a part of the improvement of our community. And I would like to tell you that everybody that is talking about this, all of these presenters tonight, I have communicated with emails, phone calls, they've responded completely to me, and I also wanted to thank all of you for the great work that you are doing. You get to be proud of yourselves. You're helping our community. We're going to survive all of this, and I'll be here later to congratulate us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this item? All right. See no one. The recommended action is motion to approve the contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Which made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank for the presentation and really doing your due diligence when it comes to this project. This economic vitality, when we, when we change the streets, it's going to raise for all, all in our community, and this is kind of where asset management comes into place. This is one of our assets, and when we work together between the roads and the water and, and things like that, and everything can come together, and we can really make it efficient. We can use our dollars to the best. I love that we have grant funding for all of this. If you guys know me, I'm always sending a grant every time I see it, so I appreciate everyone that looks at those grants and applies for them and then brings them forward to the commission. I think the public participation is going to be great, because this is going to be the time and the opportunity for our community input from residents, from businesses, from visitors, from students that come to our schools and that want to live here. And, and, you know, I believe that we've got something good going here, and I want to make sure that we keep that momentum as we try to transform our city into a safer place for everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any other? Vice Mayor Hess.
Yeah. Again, thank you for that presentation, Christina and Anthony. Christina, I, like you said, you keep, we keep learning, we keep learning. When I was coaching, we had a saying that you either win or you learn, and when we haven't won, we have learned, and that's one thing I love about our processes here in the city, whatever the process is. So this one is a big learning. This is another heavy lift, and we're doing it, and we're facing a challenge. How does this city face a challenge? Whether it is housing, whether it is poverty, whether it is upgrading our effluent sewers, we have to do it together. And we do that together with education. We do it together with coming together and saying, this is the end result that we see, and it's going to be improved economic development for all, for all. And so I'm just asking, can we be patient? Do we have the will in this community to move this project forward with optimism and with hope, and so that while there will be pain, it will be a difficult lift, can it bring us together and move us forward as a community? It is my hope that we can. Before, before I chose even to run in 2019, I heard Bobby Hopewell's last State of the City address, and he said, "For God's sakes, we live in a city that's dissected by two freeways." And, and so that got me thinking, and again, like Commissioner Prado, one of the reasons I chose to run again was to see this project through. I want a Kalamazoo that is calmed, that is economically viable for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Prado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank Christina and Anthony for their presentation. There was, you alluded this, Christina, but there was recently a Second Wave article that was published on March 7th. If you get a chance, Google this, it's fantastic, but the title of the article is "A Tale of Two Cities: South Bend Has Been Where Kalamazoo Is Now and the Future Is Promising." And if you don't look at the pictures in that article and read that article and feel more optimistic and excited about this work that's about to be done, I don't know what can convince you, because it is a fantastic piece. But I wanted to read you one quote, and it's from the person from the city of South Bend who was a part of their process and their transformation, and it's their Director of Planning and Community Resources. And he says, "Part of our thinking is that downtown is for everybody, and it isn't just merely a conduit to move cars through the city as fast as possible, and we want to support businesses. We want to support anyone who wants to come and visit our downtown. I think we're a little less concerned about people who just want to go through downtown." And I thought that's a great quote, and it's really largely about what we're trying to do here. I've said this before, and I mean this, I think this is, hands down, again, talking about the odor mitigation, one of the most consequential things that the city has undertaken in probably a generation. And I believe that when you think about it, it's just like, oh, we're just, you know, trying to make downtown, you know, fancy or whatever. No, this is, this is transformational work that's about to take place in our downtown. And I really believe it's what's going to move Kalamazoo from a really neat, great city to the preeminent, great, great city in the state of Michigan. And I think you will begin to see ripple effects of transformation that happen once this work is completed, that will reverberate for decades to come. And I've said it before that, you know, this motivation to run for reelection, this was a major part of it, but part of it is my kids, and I want my kids, my three boys, to live here for the rest of their life. And I genuinely believe that the work that we're doing in our downtown is going to make it so that they have that prosperous Kalamazoo for everybody when they're my age. So I'm really excited about this work, and I really think it's going to make a big difference for our residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Yeah, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have great respect for my colleagues and appreciate all the letters and all the people that came down here tonight. I was really glad to hear people say their support for slowing traffic and for increasing the availability of bike lanes. I very much support that, but I wonder if there isn't another way to do those things than spend $30 million and a five-year commitment to change to two-way streets. I'm hearing people say, "This is the next step. This is what's going to make our community great." I think what would make our community great would be a $30 million commitment and a five-year commitment to help the more than 50% of our households in Kalamazoo that have somebody working but can't meet their monthly bills, to help our young people succeed in school, and to help the people that are on our streets who are homeless and who need help. So I will not be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Any other comments from Commissioners at this time? Right. See none. Deputy Clerk Moss, please call a roll.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. We now have one more item. It is, was G4 on the consent agenda, and now it is H5 on our regular agenda. COO Lamb.
H5, approval of an agreement with Norwegian Winds LLC for the purchase of 232 and 310 Balch Street, adjacent to the Central Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $250,000.
Thank you very much. I know that the person that asked for this item to be moved, I believe is no longer here. Maybe just a very brief description about why, why we're making this purchase, just a reminder, remind. Director Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. This, this project, it's a pretty routine property purchase. The Central Well Field does have properties that are constraining our ability to consolidate additional treatment at Central. If we look at kind of our, all of our wellfields, you know, within the city proper, you know, we're always managing density and development in the space of where wellfields are. It's always been our goal and mission, when properties are for sale, that we are proactive in procuring properties to protect groundwater and our resources around Central Well Field. So this property is a butt and is adjacent to the Central Well Field, so Central Well Field would go all the way to Balch if not for properties on Balch. These are kind of two properties that are conj, that are essentially one business. It's the Manpower Facility there on Balch Street. It's a lot is entirely paved, the roof is entirely paved, so our, our work would involve not only the purchase, but there would be future action to, you know, remove the parking lot and remove the facility, which would, you know, restore some... which would, you know, restore some green space. There is a future plan. It's been referenced in many documents. It's also available online. It's also included within the UPC website that talks about our consolidation plan. You've heard me speak on the consolidation plan before, and I'll give you a brief synopsis of it. If we go back a few years ago, we had 16, what we call point-of-entry treatment plants. These are 16 separate locations all throughout the city that were treating water and sending that into the system. When PFAS was discovered and limits started to change in Michigan, we had two sites that we had offline to protect from PFAS. At no time did we violate any PFAS regulations, but we had the ability to see what was out there in the aquifer and what the risks were. So we had those stations shut down. Those were Stations 17 and 18 in Millwood. We're now down to 13 point-of-entry stations. We just recently consolidated Station 2 as Central to help provide some additional capacity at Central. And that is our long-term goal, to consolidate Station 3 and Station 7, both with Central. And then we've got some additional consolidations that are happening at other stations. We do have a plan in place. In fact, it is included in our FY 2025 DWSRF project plan to consolidate Station 14 and Station 5, and also introduce manganese treatment, iron removal, and PFAS treatment at that site. And that would be with a new station, Station 145, which is essentially Station 14 plus 5 together. And so this property purchase is just along all those same lines, along all those same broad, long-term goals to consolidate our stations, and then where we do have station footprints to provide protection for, you know, for the wellheads and to do that through green space and property acquisition.
Thank you very much, Director Baker. So what the request is, which was G5, thank you, Vice Mayor Hess, not G4, is the approval of an agreement with Norwegian Winds LLC for the purchase of 232 and 310 Balch Street adjacent to the Central Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $250,000. Are there questions for Director Baker on this one? Seen none. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Seen no one. The recommended action is a motion to approve the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Cooney. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seen none. Deputy Clerk Moss, please call a roll.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next, Reports and Legislation, Chief Operating Officer Lamb. Do you have a report?
I do. I'll keep it brief. It seems fitting that Public Services is our department that we wanted to feature this evening. I continue to break records at the podium, Director Baker. Just a couple of things we're excited about. Public Services is now working on its second year in a row, working with the State Department's Young Leaders of America's Initiative, and here locally with Global Ties Kalamazoo to place fellows with the Public Services Department. So this past month, we welcomed Oclia Verway from Suriname on March 11th. Ms. Verway is an energy environmental consultant that's coming to us to be able to work alongside our staff within the Water Division through the beginning of April. Between Ms. Verway and the Water Division, they're going to be looking at identifying water well performance, looking at criticality of water quality, spending some time looking at Woods Lake and Spring Valley, and learning about our water affordability program. Had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Verway and very excited about what she has to offer to our team and what our team has to offer to her. Also want to give a shout out to Steve Helmer, our wastewater superintendent. He'll be retiring in the middle of this month after nearly 31 years of exemplary service to the community. Throughout his career at the Kalamazoo Water Reclamation Plant, over 305.5 billion gallons of wastewater has been treated and discharged of the Kalamazoo River, with the permitted water quality cleaner than the river itself. We certainly want to extend our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Helmer for his years of service and all he's done for this community. That's all I have.
Thank you so very much. So for the rest of our public agenda here, we now have Commissioner comments. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment for the meeting this evening? Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. So 11 days ago, the first Hispanic city commissioner. And that is David Juarez. So I'm going to read his obituary. David Juarez passed in his Mesa, Arizona home on March 21st, 2024. Born in Adrian, Michigan to Jose and Catherine Flores Juarez, David was a loving husband, father, grandfather, and brother. He was a man of deep faith who sought to make the world a better place and help people. David's tireless work ethic started while working in the fields with his family as a young child. As the family settled in Michigan, David continued to work, pumping gas, doing dishes, providing janitorial services and so forth. He was a machinist for Simpson Park Mill for 21 years, eventually serving as a union steward. When a paper mill closed, David decided to focus on helping his community. He used his severance pay to organize and fund a block party and started a neighborhood watch with the goal of getting his neighbors to communicate and help each other. David became an employment specialist, helping people find jobs. He continued with his community activism and eventually became the first Hispanic city commissioner for Kalamazoo. Described as a grassroots commissioner, he worked with his fellow commissioner and friend to start after-school programs, arrange diversity celebrations, hold gun buyback events, and coordinate many more activities to help the community. Retiring meant moving to Mesa, Arizona, and working for Goodwill, where he ran a father's program, helping men become better fathers with employment, training, and counseling. He also volunteered his time working with the youth at the Juvenile Detention Center in Florence, Arizona. Once David truly retired, he started a Facebook page titled "Love, Just Love," where he posts positive thoughts and music that he felt sent a supportive message. A lifelong motorcycle enthusiast, David rode every day for as long as he could. David Juarez was a great man. Not great in the sense that he's going to be in the history books, but great in the sense that he loved his family, he loved his community, and he served his community. He was a great humorist, he was fun to be with, and he was my dear friend. My understanding is that tomorrow, our flag will be flown at half mast in his honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep mine short and sweet because I know we have a closed session this evening. I just want to thank everyone that came within the city and within the community to speak about the changes that are going to be happening here, especially on the streets. And I just want to say that I believe and I know that we are moving forward in so many things, whether it comes from infrastructure, whether it comes from assisting kids and our youth within the gun violence with the programs we talked about regarding our priorities at our city retreat. And I just want to keep the momentum on where we're going because I see greatness ahead of us. We just have to stay the course. And I do want to give a quick little shout out to my son. He's 13 today. I have a teenager. He was my April Fools' boy. So, Tatum Charles Decker, I just want to tell you happy 13th birthday.
That's sweet. Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. A few things. Again, also condolences to the Juarez family that was a great man, and we've lost a beautiful soul. We also lost a soul yesterday on Easter to gun violence, our latest homicide in Kalamazoo. My condolences to Kevian Rice's family and all that were involved. Appreciate the work of our Department of Public Safety and their response, and to the detectives who are working diligently to solve this case. We have to continue to be diligent as a community to work on the causes and the roots of this kind of ways to solve problems. So hopefully that everyone can choose to do their best, regardless of what it is. Do your best to make sure that we eliminate all gun violence from the city of Kalamazoo. And then just lastly, I appreciated the proclamation about work zone crashes. We've received, Commission has received several emails from the work zones along White's Road, asking for it to be, to have better signage and so on. We had great response from our Department of Public Safety, from Anthony Ladd, who said that he was going to respond to those. If people in those kind of zones have issues, please continue to reach out via email to Commission, to whoever we are, or to Public Services, or please call 311. We want to know where the areas of difficulty are for people, and by doing that, everybody stays safer, which is our job here in Kalamazoo.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Yes, Commissioner Prado?
I'll keep this pretty short as well, but this is actually something a little bit unorthodox I'm going to share as well, but wanted to share how much I appreciate, this is directed at you, Commissioner Cooney, but how much I appreciate the fact that you say, you know, "I'm going to say something, but I just want my colleagues to know how much I respect them." And I think the one thing that I've observed over the three Commissions I've served on is that every Commission that I've served on, those three Commissions, we've had that same kind of mindset, that we can disagree about something but still have tremendous respect for each other. And there is hardly anybody that I have more respect for than you. And in fact, like about once a month now, former Commissioner Juarez, Commissioner Cooney and I, we go and have breakfast together, and we talk about gun violence, and we talk about basketball, and we talk about the things that we find in common. And I think it's so easy in today's polarized society where there's so many forces that are trying to wedge us and pull us apart, that we realize that there's way, way more in common between all of us and what we're trying to achieve for this community than what divides us. And at the end of the day, I genuinely believe that we're all heading in the right direction for the right reasons together. So just wanted to lift that up and share that and how much I appreciate how you do your business.
Thank you. Commissioner Prado? Commissioner Wilson?
Right. Thank you for reading that. Commissioner Cooney, I had the honor of serving with David Juarez as well. And that's, it, one of the amazing things you get to do in your life is spend time around people who you might not have otherwise known, actually, than getting to spend time here together in what sometimes can be a hot seat and still doing that work together. So I think that means just an awful lot. You know, I just want to follow up just once again here with Vice Mayor Hess, and I'm sure, I mean, when I heard the news from the chief on Easter, I mean, I was literally sick to my stomach. And about a young person dying at 2:00 PM on an Easter Sunday, you know, I shouldn't, I guess it shouldn't matter the time, but, you know, that ripples across the community, friends and family. But a real particular recognition is that even on Easter, when we might be doing other things and spending times with our family, there's a group of people, this could be Public Services at times if we got a water main break, but our Public Safety Department, where it's staffed and working and making sure that people are available to respond to emergencies and fires and help keep this place safe. So Public Safety is out there on Easter and leaving their families and then being right in the midst of experiencing that. Not an easy thing. And I just hope that our team, you know, also feels recognized and supported and feels the gratitude that we have for those men and women that are doing that work every day. A sad, sad situation. We do have a closed session tonight, and we will not be coming back to the public meeting, right, after our closed session. So we will need a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and an attorney-client privileged communication. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson, supported by Commissioner Cooney. Clerk Moss, can you please call a roll?
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. So we will not be, once again, we will not be coming back to a public session after we go into closed session here. So at this point, I just want to make sure everybody knows, we love you, Kalamazoo, and we're adjourned.